City Council meeting for June 5th. I am sitting in this evening for Mayor Bristol. She is absent. And I believe we have Counselor De La Grange and Fazer online.
Not just yet, but I'll let you know when they attend.
Okay. Just out of quorum, all right. We like to begin our meetings with a moment of silence. If you would please join me for that. And please rise for our flag salute. Couple pieces of housekeeping. We have had some rescheduled items this evening. Item 2A, this is the resolution awarding home bridging GP Incorporated and American Rescue Plan Act Public Infrastructure Affordable Housing Grant up to $747,500 at 1907 Fruitdale Drive. That will be rescheduled to June 19th. Also, Items 7A, 8A, and 9A are also scheduled to June 19th. First order of business is a public hearing. And this is a public hearing for the approved FY25 budget and to discuss the use of state revenue sharing amounts. I believe that will be presented by Mr. Rowley. And Counselor De La Grange has joined us online.
Good afternoon, counsel, in public. Normally, Aaron is here as the budget officer, but you're in luck. We have resolutions and processes for this that designates when Aaron is out, I am your budget officer. So I'll be taking you through the final presentation for the budget tonight. So as a subject and summary, we're going to go through a public hearing today for the adoption of the fiscal year 25 budget and the use of state revenue sharing amounts included in the fiscal year 25 budget. And our council goal is related to leadership. So as an overview, the first item as far as on your agenda today is 1A is the public hearing where I'm going to go over the budget process a little bit, the budget summary and state revenue sharing. And then Items 2B, C, and D will also happen afterwards as a call to action as a council action item. So the budget process and the purpose of local budget law is to establish standard procedures, outline programs and fiscal responsibilities and fiscal policies, require estimates of resources and expenditures, encourage citizen involvement, and control expenditure of public funds. So the budget is a financial plan. For the city of Grants Pass, we do an annual budget or one fiscal year, July 1 through June 30th, based on estimates and revenues and expenditures and other requirements. And then the budget is the basis of appropriation which create the authority to spend public money. Our timeline, the city staff proposed the budget to the budget committee on May 7th. We received the budget message, overview of capital projects, police, fire, and community development. And then on May 9th, we heard public works. And then on May 14th, we heard administration and finance. Finally, on May 14th, 2024, the budget committee approved the fiscal year 25 budget and approved the city's tax rates to be levied. The committee approved budget was published in the Grants Pass Daily Courier, May 29th, 2024, and the public hearing was set for this council meeting. The process of making any further budget changes at the council level, if any, can be discussed before acting on the resolution to adopt the fiscal year 25 budget. And then after the public hearing is held, several resolutions need to be acted on later in the meeting to adopt the budget for next fiscal year. So for our strategic plan, council repeated last year's strategic plan with the same priorities. City staff was charged with maintaining current service levels and addressing capital that meet the highest priority needs. Based on internal policies and adequate fund balance should be sufficient to provide for any anticipated cyclical variations in revenues and expenditures. In the general fund, because of cyclical nature of property taxes, the majority of which are not received until November, and with the addition of the public safety services fee, the targeted beginning balance was lowered to 25% to 35% of the budget's annual expenditures to help meet service levels. The general fund balance meets council's direction and parameters. And what you can see is one of the yellows, the facility management is collecting less revenues than expending, and will be drawing down its balance over time as it is actually above its policy. And then the admin rates were increased to meet fund balance policy this year. As we look into the next year for fiscal year 26, the general fund, water and wastewater are close to their policy with 100% expended. If we are 100% expended, fund balance percentage decreased by about 8% in the general fund to that 22%. So we're sitting about 30% right now, which is way better than where we were last year when we had a 15% decrease between the years. Our garage and admin will most likely look at rate increases in the future. I'm going to turn on my little pointer here. So this can be found on page 35 and 36 of the budget. The total budget, which includes all internal services, carryover balances, contingency balances, and capital project resources, is about $255 million. The general fund, which is this piece right here, is about 20% of our budget. 47% of the city's total budget is from enterprise funds, which is water, wastewater, and stormwater. And then within those funds as well, the capital construction funds. And then internal service funds is this 12% piece of the pie right here, which provides services directly to other departments of the city. While other departments interact with the public at some level, the primary customer of these internal service departments are within the city. So for example, finance, we serve other departments through utility billing and customer service, as well as accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll, accounting, and other finance services. So the fiscal year 25 operating budget, how much it costs to run the day-to-day operations of city services includes internal charges and the operating expenditure budget, operation funds, budget less contingencies, ending balance transfers, and debt service. And basically, it's what it costs to run the day-to-day. And what you can see in this chart for our fiscal year 25 operating revenues is 35% comes from property taxes, and that's about $22 million. And this 45% comes from our utility rates mostly. So where the money goes. So a key point of our operating budget, which is again our day-to-day activities, 57% goes towards personnel, because it takes people to do the services in which we provide. That changes when you look at just the general funds budget, which is 67% based in personnel. So on page 40, the summary of requirements by program major object for the fiscal year 25, you'll see that personnel services is about $32.5 million this year. And this is what this looks like kind of in a linear graph. And you can see that public safety is obviously going up from last year. We're looking at about $33.5 million for public safety, which is an increase of about $3.2 million from the previous budget. And that is keeping a status quo service level. So in the general fund, where the money goes, again, mostly in personnel. And this is on page 30. And you can see that's about 67% of the $40 million expenditures in the general fund. Conversely, in our utility funds, the money actually goes more towards transfers, which ends up being more capital projects. And the reason why we're here having a budget hearing is the state shared revenues. So the state shared revenue law requires cities to annually declare their intention to receive state revenue sharing. The budget committee hearing held on May 14th and this hearing meet the statutory hearing requirements for state shared revenues, which is a percentage of the state's liquor tax collections. Our use of the funds will be part of general support resources in the general fund, which the departments benefiting our police-fire support, parks, development, and policy and legislation. The approximate dollar amount that we estimate from state shared revenues this year is $539,100. There's a little bit more information online on the Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission website. What we're talking about right here is the $79 million approximately that the cities have a distribution of. There's other ways that communities and counties get money from the LLC, but this is where this calculation comes from. We do receive other monies from the state. Here is a list on page 330 of your budget document for other general support resources. And you'll see that there's business taxes, franchise taxes, the state revenue sharing, which is the $539,000 I just mentioned, the cigarette tax, the liquor tax, and some other non-dedicated revenues. We do have other taxes that are both at the state and local level that are dedicated to certain programs. So for the city of Grants Pass, we dedicate the state shared marijuana tax to police, as well as our local marijuana tax to police. And for the state gas tax, we dedicate the approximate $3.2 million to streets. So in summary, this is a balanced budget. Capital budgets are addressing high priorities. There's work ahead, obviously, to meet the challenges as we try to maintain service levels. As a quick note, I'd like to thank you for your teamwork, commitment, and assistance of all of our elected officials, budget committee members, other committee members, and participating community members. And a big thank you to city staff for the months of work and continuing commitment to excellence and stewardship in budgeting for the benefit of our community. And with that, I will take any questions regarding our budget.
Any questions? Seeing none, I will move to open public comment. Would anyone, a member of the public, like to speak on this agenda item, the FY25 budget and state revenue sharing amounts? Please come forward. Seeing none. There is no recommended action for council tonight. This really was just an opportunity to hear from the public. So we will move on to the next item, item 2D.
One thing I did, and you're right, there's no action. But one thing I did want to say is I really wanted to compliment the budget committee on work. It was a very good conversation, I think, in my years as a budget person. This is like one of the times where I really felt that the people who came to the table to support us really knew and had good questions, and we had very good conversations. So I, more than anything, I can't tell you how much value I think in being involved with the budget process is. So I want to commend those people for coming forward and working with us on that budget.
Thank you. I would agree. There was certainly a level of engagement this year that was unique and applaudable, certainly. We will move, we're going a little out of order, but in terms of the topic, it is related. We'll move to item 2D, resolution declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues.
So there is a resolution in your packet. The state's shared revenues is a percentage of the state's liquor tax collections. And again, the use of the funds, we use those for police-fire support, parks, development, and policy and legislation. The estimated amount is about $539,000, and I have a potential motion on the screen.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, I will open this to the public comment. Would any member of the public like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, move it back to council. Counselor Lovelace?
I move to approve the resolution to receive state shared revenues in the next fiscal year.
Seconded by Counsel Younger. And since you made the motion, Counselor Lovelace, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
All vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
And Counselor De La Grange online? Star six if you're muted. Hearing none, Counselor Fazer?
Yes. Yeah.
I think the first was De La Grange and the second Fazer. Thank you. That passes unanimously. We will now move to item 2B, resolution levying taxes and categorizing taxes for FY25 for the city of Grants Pass.
So for the next fiscal year, fiscal year 25, at the rate of $4.1335 per thousand of assessed value for the general fund permanent rate, and for the rate of $1.79 per thousand for the assessed value for the general fund, public safety, local option levy, and with another potential motion on the screen.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, would any member of the public like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll move it back to council. Counselor Younger?
I'll move to approve the resolution to levy and categorize property tax for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Lovelace. Counselor Younger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yeah.
Counselor De La Grange?
Yes.
Unanimously passed. Thank you. We will lastly move to item 2C, resolution adopting the budget and making appropriations for FY25.
So the last one is to, again, resolution adopting the budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 25. And there are some limitations on the amendments that I'd like to just make sure that you're aware of, that a 10% limit on increases to expenditure budgets per fund without having, we'll potentially need to send this back to the budget committee for a second budget hearing. If there are no amendments, there are the approved totals below, which all funds is about $253 million of appropriations, with an unappropriated amount of about $1.9 million with a total budget of $255 million. And with that, there is a potential motion on the screen.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, would any members of the public like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll move it back to council. Counselor Riker?
I'd like to move to approve the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Lovelace. Counselor Riker, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Counselor De La Grange?
There wasn't an opportunity to make, have discussion after the motion, so I'd just like to say that I'm not comfortable with the water treatment plant escalation and costs, so I'll be voting no.
Counselor Fazer?
Yeah.
Thank you. Seven to one. We will move on to item 1B, ordinance amending the zoning map for the property located at 2117 Allen Creek Road. And this is for the second reading. There will be no presentation this evening. This is a second reading. Counselor Lovelace?
I move to adopt the ordinance amending the zoning map for 2117 Allen Creek Road and have it read by title only, second reading.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Riker. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. Counselor Lovelace, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Abstain.
I will vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor De La Grange?
Yes.
And Counselor Fazer?
Yeah.
That passes seven to zero with one abstention.
An ordinance of the council, the city of Grants Pass, amending the zoning map for property located at 2117 Allen Creek Road.
Next order of business is a quasi judicial hearing. This will be for an ordinance vacating the common property line between tax lots 1008 and 1009 of map number 36-05-30-CB. And at this time, I will open the public hearing to consider previously stated item with an application by the property owner. Not seeing it readily available. The application is for vacating a common property line. We will begin the hearing with a staff report, followed by the presentation by the applicant, statements by persons in favor of the application, statements by person in opposition to the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by the applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed, and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Seeing none, do any counselors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? Seeing none, are there any counselors who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, or other ex parte information that they've received prior to this meeting regarding the application? Seeing none. In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the Development Code. All testimony which apply in this case are noted in the staff report. If you would like a copy of the staff report, please write that on a note to the city manager, and one will be provided. It is important to remember that if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and both parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The hearing will now proceed with a staff report.
Thank you, Council President. The property owner name is on the screen behind me, the one that you were looking for. I unfortunately did not get a hold of them to get a pronunciation. But they do own both of the lots that are the subject of the application tonight. So this is off of Williams Highway. The yellow property here, there's two lots here. This is in the Cedarwood Estate subdivision. It was platted about, probably about three years ago. Relatively new, this demi-court cul-de-sac, if you went down Williams Highway on your way, you know, towards the golf course and Cathedral Hills on the left-hand side as you're heading out of town, that's demi-court, that cul-de-sac. And so most of these houses have been built out. These two right here that are highlighted are, as I mentioned, owned by the same property owner. The request is to remove this property line that's shown here in the middle that was platted as two separate lots. There's an existing primary single-family dwelling here on the southerly one. They want to construct a new unit, but an accessory unit on the property. So rather than having it be a separate tax lot, they want to be able to just build an accessory unit. Typically, the main reason for that is, you know, you only need one meter. And in terms of using one meter, if you have an accessory building versus when you have it's sitting on its own separate tax lot, you have to have your own individual separate meter. So that's usually the reason why. So the request was reviewed by staff. There's these two criterion for approval. Those have been reviewed, and staff did not receive any comments on this application. And the call to action is on the screen behind me.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Counselor Riker, go ahead.
Thank you, Brad. Can you go back to the aerial photo?
Sure.
So that street down below, is that where the coffee stand is? And then that's, do you know the name of that street? Human being, I think, is...
I believe that's correct.
Is that correct?
Well, actually, if we're talking about the... You talking about, you hear where my arrow is?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Counselor. I did not, I could look it up, but I do not know off the top of my head.
That's okay. I think that's a human being, though, so that gives me... Yeah, that helps me. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, I will open this up to the public. Would any member of the public like an opportunity to speak on this item? And just as formality, is the applicant present to speak on the application?
They're not present, but...
Would you please step forward if you would like to make a comment? Thank you.
They weren't able to be present, but the acting people that helped them with this, as well as I built that subdivision, as well as demi-court, it's my granddaughter's name, so it's kind of a special place to me. They don't intend to do anything that's going to make the place look wrong. It's a beautiful subdivision. It's probably one of the nicest ones in the city that's been built lately. And everybody in the subdivision supports what they're doing. So I think it's a very good thing. Yes, that's it.
Thank you. For your name, would you mind, or excuse me, for the record, would you state your name, please?
My name is Robert Pierce.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Seeing none, I'll move this back to council. Counselor Younger?
I move to approve the ordinance vacating the property lines between tax lot 1008, 1009, map number 36-05-30-CB, first reading.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Lovelace. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
All vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yeah.
And Counselor De La Grange?
Yes.
Unanimously passed, eight to zero.
An ordinance of the council, the city of Grants Pass, vacating the common property lines between tax lots 1008 and 1009 of map number 36530CB.
Thank you. Counselor Lovelace?
I move to adopt the ordinance vacating the common property line between tax lots 1008 and 1009 of map number 35-05-30-CB and have it read by title only, second reading.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Riker. Counselor Lovelace, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor De La Grange?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yeah.
Eight to zero.
An ordinance of the council, the city of Grants Pass, vacating the common property lines between tax lots 1008 and 1009 of map number 36530CB.
Thank you. Moving on to item 3A, motion appointing one member to the Urban Tree Advisory Committee. I do believe that this committee had two openings, and there was one candidate that applied. I guess the easy way to do this is if anyone had, you guys, I guess, just want to, Counselor Lovelace?
I move to appoint Logan Warner to the Urban Tree Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor King. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Counselor Lovelace, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yeah.
And Counselor De La Grange?
Yes.
Unanimously appointed. Welcome to the Urban Tree Advisory Committee, Mr. Warner. Next up will be public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on items not related to a public hearing or a council action item for the council. The intent is to provide information that is pertinent to the city's jurisdiction. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the council as one body, not to individuals. At the conclusion of public comment, council will have the opportunity to respond. And this meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free from slander, threats, or other personal attacks. Signs or placards, outbursts of applause, campaigning for public office, and other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. If you have a question regarding any government-provided service or a current city policy, please contact the city manager's office in an attempt to resolve the matter. On Monday, at our workshop, council did have a discussion, and there was a general consensus to move forward with reducing the public comment time from three minutes to two minutes. I had a quick discussion with everyone except for a couple of counselors, the remote and Counselor Pell. But if there isn't any objection largely, I would like to move that we shortened the public comment time from three minutes to two minutes, as discussed on Monday. All right. And we'll move forward first with the people who have submitted the blue cards. Mr. Brock Spurgeon, if you would please come forward. Mr. Brock Spurgeon, if you would please come forward.
Hello. Brock Spurgeon, Grants Pass. I live by Riverside Park. I want to talk to you people and find out if we've got a plan in place for cleaning up the park. Riverside West is what I'm talking about. Moved all the campers out, cleaned it up real good for the parking and stuff. Last Wednesday, I took a walk through the park. I walked down by the water's edge and then I walked the perimeter of the park and I picked up, let me see it here, seven needles, 22 cats, eight burnt foils, four tokers, and seven tie-offs. It took me an hour to make this walk, it's a 20-minute walk, but I just started picking up what I could see on the trail, just whatever is in my way. I didn't look in the bushes. This is it. This is what we see at the park. I take a walk in the park and I'm picking this stuff up off the ground. We've got dogs and kids playing out there in the parks. It's upsetting. I wanted to come and give you help. I was pretty pissed, but I don't have the energy to do that. But I want to know if we have a plan for cleaning out those bushes between the river and the park. There's a lot of trails down there. There's tons of garbage and blankets and sleeping bags and you name it. It's all down there right on the water's edge. If you just go down and look, just take a walk. And I'm doing it. I'll pick it up. I've cleaned that riverside up four times in the last month. I need some help. Our Park Watch group needs some help. You know, maybe we could work together, you know, give us a guy in a truck, move down there and start doing it on a regular basis, but let's think about kids and animals. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dell Aldridge.
Dell Aldridge, City of Grants Pass. I go to Medford a lot because I can't take my kids to the parks here because there are too many drugs and too many druggies. And in every park in Medford, there's a sign, "Park Watch." If it's an emergency, dial 911. If it's not emergency, there's a non-emergency number. And then if there's a problem with the park, there's the city park. On our Park Watch flyer, we added that on here, what to say. Call the non-emergency number on these things. And it's happening more and more. We're getting people in the park reporting that green car everywhere. And I, to the point where it's like, they're asking me on the Facebook page, "What are you going to do about it?" I'm going to ask you, "What are we going to do about it? This guy, this lady's been selling drugs in every single park. Every business has thrown them off. Motel 6? Skate park? Come on! We got pictures of this guy and it's not like, people say, "Oh, he's just standing there." We, they actually report them selling drugs. People running up to him to get to the location. He actually showed up, like I said, when Dr. Phil was out there. And they were wondering what we were running up with a camera filming him about. This has got to stop. These dealers are selling death. And until we stop the dealers, it's going to continue to get worse. Park Watch is not against the homeless. We're against the dealers and the druggies. And the trash. Well, I hate that thing. But we need to do something about it. I don't know what to tell them, you know? What do you got to do? You got to videotape it and turn it in every single day? People are actually reporting the problems in the park. I'm sure your calls are up because they don't want, they're tired of this. And we need to do something about it now, not tomorrow. Oh, see you out at 29th for the Kids' Day at the Park.
Thank you. Next up is Eric Fitch.
Mr. Fitch, returned resident. Today's 10 years since I've come to you with the problem. It's been here since months and without a resolve, so today is a tort claim day. Do I have to give it to you? I've asked you to come into compliance, but you don't want to, so here we go. I'm ready to freeze all your assets. Have a good day.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that are here to speak on open public comment? Okay, seeing none. If you'd like, come on down. Please state your name. If you'd like to say something, yes, please come down, state your name. You'll have two minutes. The yellow light will be a 30-second warning.
Hi, my name's Amy Wright. And with the Park Watch, I just wanted to comment on, everywhere I go, people are telling me they can't take their kids to the park. Oh, we used to, I'm sure you guys hear this all the time. And, you know, what do we do? But the parents are really up in arms. They don't know what to do. They don't know what to do with their children. But I tell them to take them to Redwood Park because Redwood Park's very nice. I mean, there's been like two tents in three months and they don't stay there. But I just want to let you know that the parents, the parents are just, they don't know what to do. And so they're kind of looking to us to kind of help know what to do. And we hope the city leaders will help do something about it. I know the hands are tied for most part of it, but we just want to let you know that people out there are desperate and there's voices and people that want to be heard. And I appreciate all of you. I just wanted to tell you that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none. I'll move it back to counsel. Would anyone? Counsel Pell?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Chief Hensman, do you have any response or can you offer any explanation to Dell tonight about the woman in a green car that seems to be selling drugs that everyone knows about?
Yeah, I can absolutely give a response. My first response is, I don't know anything about this green car. My second response is that we actively enforce drug violations in this community. We have a robust presence in Southern Oregon through our Rogue Area Drug Enforcement Team, excuse me, who are quite involved in lots of operations in the region to include our partnership with the DEA. We do everything we can to enforce the laws and the rules within our parks and our city. And I would just ask that you please forward that specifically to me and I can dig into a little bit deeper. I think most of the community, specifically Park Watch, know when they put something in front of me, I follow up and take action. There was an incident that happened just a while ago and it sounded something similar to this, and that individual was arrested. So we're doing everything we can to enforce the rules and the laws in our parks and here in Grants Pass.
Counsel Yunker?
I just want to recognize that, you know, obviously Park Watch, I know, I think she said her name is Amber, but I don't know if I got it right, but everybody talked about the park and I have a feeling you're talking about the green PT Cruiser, but I could be wrong. I don't know. And I just say, I probably need to go back down and do some cleaning because it's been a while since I volunteered to work with the city parks and clean up. I've done it a few times, but some people know I have like five different hats, so that's a little hard to do. But I will make time for it. I think that's, I still live here and it's my park, so I'm going to get with the staff here and volunteer to do some cleanup. But I see what you see. I was at Tussing last week. I just want to make sure you know that. I sat there for about 45 minutes and watched the same thing that you see. It's not a secret. Nice, Dapp came and talked to me. I know some of those people, so I'm not calling anyone you a liar. I know it's there. I see the same things. I see your postings. I saw Bruce's video. Kind of brought things back to touch for me. You know, these people actually have more than just trying to clean the parks up, that some of them have more attachment than, he can share his own story, but you know, that it's just not about cleaning the park up. It's more about other things. So I think we should give them a little recognition that some of them want other things, good things. And I'm hoping, we've got also know that doing drugs is still legal till September 1st. And that's not a very good answer, but it is still legal till September 1st. And of course, I would like it to stop today, but I don't know if it's going to stop today because I'm just like you. I see all this stuff. I drive by the bottle drop 20 times a day because I live in that area. And if you live by the bottle drop, you can see all the garbage and stuff going on there too. So I think we're very aware of what's going on and it's embarrassing. And I'm hoping here, pretty soon, we can make some decisions. I know there is some decisions already talking, but we can't make any final decisions until we know what we can do. I don't really want to make a bad decision and then we start all over, so. But I'm hoping that we can make some really good decisions here. And there's a lot of housing things going on too. I mean, at our last meeting, there's a lot of housing things going on in this community that people are trying to, elderly, you know, the mission just came out with their thing, going to have several houses for elderly. I think that's a good one, if we can get that, help them out. You know, there's other groups. I was told yesterday or today that, I know, Mid Rogue, if they get, if they can get all their money, that that one's probably going to be larger than I thought it was going to be, if I'm correct. So that's another one. So I think there's a lot of groups trying to do things. It's just, you're never going to fix homelessness. You know what I'm saying? You'll probably put a dent in it. So thank you for at least doing what you guys do and cleaning up out there. Thank you.
Counsel Lovelace?
Yeah, I want to say thank you. I say it over and over again, but I love the idea of a community cleanup, of a time that you just get as many people as possible to go down and do the parks. You know, we have felt we've had our hands tied because, I mean, the reality of it is, is it's the courts that have been dictating what has to happen. And that's the problem is our, we should not be having the courts make the law, the rules. That's up to us. So hopefully, we will get a balance from the Supreme Court in what should happen. We are thinking even, trying to work in the background to see what we can do and what's going to move forward, looking at other cities, because if the injunction goes, we'll have the opportunity to set our own place, time, place, and manner, which we have not had the opportunity. We were locked in by the injunction. So our hopes is that we will have the opportunity to set that ourselves and make it positive. And as for parents and what to do, I mean, I guess I'm thankful. I don't have any grandchildren that live here. But I will say that, you know, there's safety in numbers. You know, it's scary to go with one or two, but I really do think that the more we can get more people out there and more parents out there to help and be at the park, that that in itself will shut down some of the activities. So it's about using the park. By being afraid to use it, we're just making it worse. But if we go out there in numbers and find friends and say, "Let's go, just go down." I mean, it's great park, it's going to be 90, 90 degrees. That's what that's there for. So I think, you know, I encourage parents to go down in numbers and just make a stand at the parks. And once again, report everything possible. And I appreciate you putting on the signs the number to call because I think that does make a difference.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to our consent agenda. And this is items included...
We don't have any emails.
Thank you. The consent agenda will include items of such routine nature or without controversy that they may be approved with a single action. And this will be read by our council vice president, Riker.
Item 5A, resolution reaffirming the inter-fund loan to the Bancorp Fund from the Solid Waste Capital Funds Project for interim financing. Item 5B, resolution authorizing the Josephine County Assessor to displace the delinquent sewer charges for the City Grants Pass on the tax rolls for collection. Item 5C, resolution authorizing the Josephine County Treasurer to include city property taxes receipts in their investment program. 5D, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter in their contract for Dean Drive and Northeast Sanitary Sewer Project, TR 6446. 5E, resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with the State Accident Insurance Fund Corporation for workers' compensation insurance for fiscal year 2025. 5F, motion acknowledging the receipt of the monthly investment report for April 2024. 5G, motion approving the Development Code Tax Amendment for Article 2, 12, 13, 15, 17, 18, 19, 22, 25, and 30, middle housing-related findings of fact. 5H, motion approving the Allen Creek Stormwater Pond Zone Map Amendment and Annexation Findings of Fact. 5I, motion approving the comprehensive plan and zone map amendment findings of fact. 5J, motion approving the minutes of the city council meeting of May 15, 2024. 5K, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Tourism Advisory Committee meeting of April 1, 2024. 5L, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Historical Buildings and Sites Committee meeting of April 11, 2024. 5M, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Collaborative Economic Development Committee meeting of April 25, 2024. 5N, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Committee on Public Art meeting of April 9, 2024. 5O, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Housing Advisory Committee meeting of April 19, 2024. 5P, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Urban Area Planning Commission meeting of April 24, 24. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Lovelace. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Counsel Riker, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counsel Lovelace?
Yes.
Counsel King?
Yes.
Counsel Yunker?
Yes.
Counsel Pell?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Counsel Fazer?
Yep.
Counsel Dela Grange?
Yes.
Passed unanimously, eight to zero. If I could please have a motion to adjourn the city council meeting and convene as the Urban Renewal Agency?
I'd like to adjourn the city council meeting and convene the Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Riker. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will hear item 7B, resolution of the Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency awarding Joni Anderson, URA Building Rehabilitation and Restoration Grant for the property located at 245 Southeast G Street.
Good evening, council, members of the public. I'm Dana Pierce, Second Act Development Division here at the City of Grants Pass. Tonight, I'm presenting to you an Urban Renewal Agency Building Rehab Grant. We're hoping to see Joni Anderson come in here pretty soon. So if she comes in, I'll let you know. She's on her way. So the subject and summary tonight, a resolution for the Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency awarding Joni Anderson an Urban Renewal Building Rehab and Restoration Grant for her property located at 245 Southeast G Street. This relates to council goals by encouraging economic opportunities. A little bit of background, the property owner, Joni Anderson, is ready to proceed on needed building facade improvements, painting, re-roofing, masonry repair, emergency egress, ADA bathroom upgrades, and sidewalk improvements. The building was previously occupied by road cleaners and has been vacant since December of 2023. The upgrades are needed to prepare for a potential new tenant to fill the vacancy. Here are a few images to give you an idea of the work that needs to be done. Some re-roofing and painting. You can see that the facade needs to have that redone. The masonry repair, because it was a laundromat and there are ventilation holes in the concrete, those need to be filled in. And then also some sidewalk improvements on G Street. The Eighth Street frontage, she actually redid a few years ago, so that sidewalk is in good shape. And then here's an image at the top of the emergency egress door upstairs that needs to be replaced. And you can see the bathroom that's there right now is not ADA accessible. She did lay out some boards... She did lay out some boards so you could get an idea of how that, the bathroom would lay out in, in the building. A little bit more background, this project is eligible through the City of Grants Pass Urban Renewal Grant and Loan Guidelines under project number nine, which is the Building Rehab Program. It also relates to the Urban Renewal Agency Plan Goals and Objectives in Section 3, 4, and 5. The cost implications, in the FY '24 URA budget, there were $250,000 appropriated for grant opportunities. The URA awarded three grant requests totaling $142,314, so that leaves a remaining total of $107,686. This grant request totals $10,123.25. And there's a breakdown here that shows you for the private project costs, it's a 25% reimbursement, which totals $7,263.25. And then the 50% is reimbursed for the public project costs, so that would be $2,086. So, call to action tonight, it's April 5. It's at council discretion. You can approve the grant request, modify the request, or deny it. I have a potential motion here for you. Yes.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Go ahead.
I have a question. So the whole purpose of this grant is to basically fix a building up so we would get more tax dollars. Is that kind of how the thing's supposed to work?
I, I mean, that's a piece of it. I guess, yeah, that's what urban, the purpose of urban renewal is.
So how is this going to improve our tax base? Are they going to pull permits or something? Because it doesn't get reevaluated. It can only go up 3% unless they pull permits and we go out there and evaluate the building and say, it's now worth this much money, so.
Sure. Also, because it's vacant, if, if we're able to bring in a business, that's also going to help with increasing the tax base as well, so.
Councilor Pell?
So this, the, the tenant that was in this building, didn't they receive multiple grants from council to move their business a few blocks over?
Yes.
So we basically, the city basically helped move the tenant out, essentially. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and that tenant did invest in building a multi-purpose building, residential upstairs, commercial downstairs, new unit, yeah. So it left this, this building vacant and as you can see, it, it's in disrepair. It needs to be fixed up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Lovelace?
Yeah, I just have a question about the fiscal year. So the URA budget for fiscal year '24, does that run through the end of this month?
Yes.
And so, so far of that, we've spent $142,000 of the $250,000.
Yes.
And this will add the, the remaining below.
Mm-hmm.
So that's when this fiscal year stops. Okay.
Yes.
Any additional questions? Seeing none. I don't think Joni.
She's not going to make it in time.
She's present, but I would like to open it up to the applicant if they are present. Seeing none. Would any member of the public like to comment on this agenda item? Also seeing none. I'll move it back to council for discussion. Councilor King?
So one of the things that strikes me is it's better to become involved at this stage before the building has deteriorated further. And it's much more cost effective in terms of a downtown area rather than abandoning the building or having improvements not made. And, and I think that with the city being a partner in that, I think it's in the interest of, of everyone that we approve the grant.
Councilor Lovelace?
And with that, I'm going to move to approve the resolution of the Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency awarding Joni Anderson an Urban Renewal Building Rehab and Restoration Grant for property located at 245 Southeast G Street.
Seconded by Councilor King. Any discussion on that motion? Councilor Pell?
There's a couple of things. You know, in the past, I know that I've, don't necessarily feel it's the city's responsibility to do routine maintenance on people's buildings through grants like this. However, in this case, we've got emergency egress and the ADA bathroom upgrades. To me, that's actually the spirit of what the council's been trying to do with a lot of building owners, especially downtown, is to be able to have people modernize their buildings without having to pay huge sums just to come up to current, current code. So I, I definitely support that aspect. I also feel that because essentially the city was somewhat instrumental in moving the tenant out of this building, in a certain sense, I think we kind of owed to the tenant to try to make them whole so that they can attract a new tenant. And we were instrumental with some of the grants that we gave the, the old tenant to move a few blocks away. So for those reasons, I'll be voting yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilor Riker?
I think any opportunity to improve our city, to make it more attractive and to bring in new businesses and have opportunities for those businesses that don't currently be located here, come to Grants Pass, the more choices they have, the better opportunity to have a nice city and also just to bring in new businesses, which is opportunity for employment as well as the other benefits to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Councilor Lovelace, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilor King?
Yes.
Councilor Younger?
Yes.
Councilor Pell?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Councilor Riker?
Yes.
Councilor Fazer?
Yes.
Councilor Dela Grange?
Yes.
Unanimously passed, eight to zero. We will move on. If I could please have a motion to adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting and reconvene. Councilor Lovelace?
I move to adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
Is there a second on her motion? Thank you. Councilor Younger, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome back to the city council meeting. We will move on to matters from mayor, council, and staff. Council, do you have anything you'd like to add? Councilor King?
Yeah, so I found some good references. I think that if anybody wants a copy, I want to make the council and members of the public aware of them. One is 2023, the Oregon statewide homeless estimates, Oregon Housing and Community Services. This is from Portland State University using Oregon Health Authority's metrics. It has surplus and deficit beds by county. It has the amount of unsheltered homeless per capita in each county. And when you look at it, it's kind of a situational awareness and we can compare our community to the other communities using these statistics and also see what's going on in other communities. It's kind of interesting. As we move forward and, and we possibly look at an alternative shelter or a shelter, there's this other report that I found really useful. And it's from OHA and Portland State University and it's called the Alternative Shelter Evaluation Report. And it's from the Joint Office of Homeland Services up at Portland State University. And they talk about where people go from different shelters, when they leave the shelter, and the success rates of different kinds of shelters, and the size of the shelters, and infrastructure that's either important or not important for the shelter's success. And I think it's important as we move forward that we at least be situationally aware of, of options and, and how those options have turned out in other counties. So anyway, it's, it was revealing to me, both, both of them were very revealing. And if anybody wants a copy, I'll give them a copy. And I got to tell you that, I mean, unlike the editorial in tonight's paper, you know, you can get people out of the park, it doesn't necessarily solve the homeless issue. But, but I guess that's a good thing to do, is to get them out of the park. I know it is. But it's a very complex issue.
Any other counselors like to make a comment? Councilor Lovelace?
Yeah, I'm just going to remind this weekend, you know, there's a lot of things to do, but one of the things there is, is art in the garden, where you can visit various gardens around town and there's their art and see those gardens. And then money goes to support our local art museum. So you can buy tickets at the Redwood Nursery, the one on Union, I can't think, I was just there the other day and I can't think of which one that is, what the name of it is. But good cause, so that's on Saturday and Sunday this weekend.
Any other counselors? Seeing none. I did want to give a shout out to the business listening session that will be held by our Economic Development Division. This, the intention of this is for businesses located near, in the area of Redwood Highway and Redwood Avenue, come engage with the economic development team. We'd like to hear what's going well, what's going wrong, how the city could better be partners. This will be held June 25 from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And it'll be at Cascade Spring Meadow Retirement Community. That's 1357 Redwood Circle. Staff, did you have anything that you'd like to add this evening?
One brief note, we have finally got some motion on the BRIC grant. We received our first RFI from Oregon Emergency Management and staff request for information. Sorry, saw the look. And where staff is busy putting together a response to that, it was only like six questions with 114 subparts to it, so we're, it's, it's a, it's a lift. But we're gathering information. We've got another meeting scheduled with them in a couple of weeks and we'll keep you informed.
Do we know if that, the RFI response is that the normal procedure? Or is this a good sign that we are?
Yeah, so we've been comparing notes. Medford Water Commission was also awarded a BRIC grant. They have received an RFI at the same time and they are also scratching their head with the complexity of the questions. Let me say it really carefully. It feels almost like they didn't fully read the application, so they're asking a lot of questions that were just pulling the information back out of the application and presenting it back to them. But it is the normal process.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, seeing none. At 7:02, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Seconded by Councilor Younger. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 I know, this is like.